Here, ready.
I don't know what that means.
I have no idea what that means.
And then what does this mean?
Is that like tinted lights or tinted?
I don't care if they get the options. I just want to know so I know.
Does that mean if you're parked?
Okay, I'm ready whenever you are, Steve.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll stand and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, we're gonna start out the meeting, uh, little different than we have. Uh, we've been talk, we've, at the annual picnic, we always recognize our Years of Service Awards and I decided it'd be nice if we mentioned them here briefly as we start our meetings, if we got some. And this week, we want to recognize Human Resources Coordinator Mikel Johnson for five years of service and social worker Teresa Potzky with twenty-five years over at, uh, Social Services. So congratulations to both of them. Keep up the good work. And with that, we'll move on to, uh, the public comment period. If there's anyone from the public that doesn't appear to be. So then we will move on to the, uh, January seventeenth agenda. Is there any additions or corrections, Andrew?
I, I don't have any.
Well, excuse me, is it at this point where we have a couple items to remove? Or do we?
Under consent.
Wait with that?
We'll do that under consent. Okay. So I got a motion by Commissioner Olberg for the, uh, Board Meeting Agenda.
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll move on to the Consent Agenda and, uh, Andrew, if you want to walk through it and Julie, if you want to.
So, uh, today's consent agenda, we have the January third Board Meeting Minutes, Social Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, Reappointment to Steve Placence to the Personnel Board of Appeals, Approval of the Hire of a Part-Time Seasonal Snowplow Operator Josh Samuelson, Step A, twenty-five eighty-nine an hour, uh, effective today. Prove the Employment Status Change for Full-Time Dispatcher Carrie Daniels into Part-Time, effective on February first. Approval of the Hire of Full-Time Corrections Corporal Mindy Hanson, Level B, twenty-three, Step Three, twenty-three fifty-six an hour, effective February first. Hire of Social Worker Caleb Mickelson, Level C, forty-one, Step One, twenty-seven twenty-nine an hour, effective January twenty-third. The Hire of Full-Time Accounting Assistant Sharice Vogel, at Level A thirteen, Step Four, twenty dollars and ninety cents per hour, effective February ninth. Hire Full-Time Accounting Assistant Jettie, uh, at, Level A thirteen, Step Six, twenty-one thirty-two, January twenty-third. Promotion of Network Administrator thirty-two, twen- thirty-nine thirty-one an hour, effective January eighteenth. Approval of the Clifton Larson Allen Twenty-Twenty-Two Statement of Work for Our Audit Services. The Climate Makers HVAC Maintenance Agreements. Approval of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Community AIS Grants. Approval of the Cedar Mills Gun Club Temporary On-Sale Liquor License. Approval of the Annual Tobacco License Renewals. Uh, Approval of the Use of Southwest Minnesota EMS Corp. Grant Money for Community Paramedic Expenses. Approval of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Federal Boat Safety Grant Contract. Acceptance of a three-hundred-and-two-dollar donation from Trinity Lutheran Church. Acceptance of a one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six-dollar-and-fifteen-cent donation from United Community Action Program. Approval of the Twenty-Twenty-Three Administrator Goals. And that concludes the Consent Agenda.
All right. Julie, you had a question or two?
Um, Paul and I attended the Aquatic Invasive Species Meeting last week and there are two items within the Consent Agenda that we would like removed until next month. There were some discrepancies about dollar amounts for two of the grants and the, uh, AIS Coordinator has been on vacation and I was not able to get ahold of her to verify that. And there's no hurry. So if we could pull that particular item and, uh, we also would like to have the bylaws because it was not clarified, um, one of the items for that in regard to whether or not the county commissioner on the board can have an actual.
So the, the bylaws are not a part of the Consent Agenda. Um, what I would suggest is pulling the other item from the Consent Agenda and we can discuss it when we talk about the AIS item. So let's move that item from the.
Oh, sure.
And we can prove the rest of the Consent Agenda.
Okay, so just pulling the grant one?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're, so we're gonna pull the entire item M.
Well, we have to get a motion.
Pull item M and move it to when we discuss the, the other AIS.
We don't need a motion for that?
No, no.
Okay. So those, those are my reasons.
Well, then I'm gonna pull a few things off this consent. No, I'm kidding.
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
Hold on, hold on. I, I got a question. As, as long as Sharon's in the room here, Clifton Allen Larson, a couple of years ago, he switched from the state to CLA for your audit. Or is that satisfactory with everything?
Yeah, we went through the first year, so this will be our second year with them. But yeah, it was a lot of legwork just because they weren't familiar with the county, but it, it went pretty well.
Okay.
Yep, they were good to work with.
I had some phone calls with them and they seemed very nice. I mean, very accommodating, a little different.
Well, and the, and the other reason I ask is because if we were gonna make a change, if I remember, hey, we give them like a year notice or something too, so.
So that was my question too. Should we be looking every year or not? Are we about where we need to be?
Well, I think it's a two-year. It's every.
Right, but we have to give them notice for it, so.
Well, I think you have to give the state notice. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
He's on a contract, but whenever with the state, you have to give them that.
But this, you don't have to, then?
No, it's through, it's an annual contract.
Two-year contract, one-year. Okay, so we just renew it.
All right, sounds good. That was my question on that. And then, uh, UCAB, do we know what that, do you have any idea, Paul, what that, uh, donation was from or for?
No.
Okay. That was my only questions. And now, Commissioner Johnson, I'm ready.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, Hospital Matters. And Kurt, we've, it looks like we've allowed ten minutes for this and I thought when I read that, that had to be a typo because I don't think you can get done in ten, can you?
I bet he can.
Uh, would you jump into financials?
So we have, uh, August through November with our actual year-to-date presented. We saw an operating income of one point eight million year-to-date with a net income of two-point-one million, which is a four percent operating profit margin year-to-date through November. And we also have a forecast amount and then forecasted year-to-date and also comparing to our budget. So our budget, um, for twenty-twenty-two, we had set a one-point-three-million-dollar net income, which is a three percent margin. And year-to-date, we've exceeded it. We are still wrapping up December to see where we are going. Um, we did have a couple months there where our expenses were a little bit heavier, um, you can see on the operating income side. However, we, we have maintained positive cash flow throughout the entire year. So we are working now with our annual budget. Little restrictive, tight on, on the expenses, but we are making some adjustments to try to align the best way to move on with connection.
MHA reported at their annual board meeting this last, um, weekend that, um, I think was the average hospital profit margin was negative one-point-five percent.
Right.
Um, and it's looking at kind of going forward also. So we're above what, what the average in the state of Minnesota is, so. Um, but it's tight. I mean, just like what you guys are probably dealing with and everybody around is labor and cost of labor, um, so. Uh, you know, we're still short, uh, continues, uh, travel nurses. You know, we're down a few dockers. We've been recruiting and hosting. Uh, that's been difficult. Um, also, um, interns are what people are looking for. They're not looking for the full gamut of, of, uh, hospital and clinic. They either want hospital or they want clinic. They don't want both. So, uh, we'll continue to work forward with that. Uh, labor market, uh, you know, is, uh, worrisome, uh, as it is with everybody, much for most part. You know, we, we had a decent year, um, with, uh, fall of labor and, uh, forecasting for next month or for the next year budget. Uh, we are still forecasting a positive bottom line, uh, not at a five percent, um, but, uh, it is positive, uh, going forward and there's some.
All right.
That's it?
Bye, that's it.
Well, Jeff.
It's because she didn't talk.
She's the brains of the two.
There is a couple things. Um, there is a case where we had a, uh, there's a patient there that you guys were struggling with in terms of mental illness. I'm still baffled by how that happened and why your staff would have to deal with that. Is there something that we could have done more proactive as a county, as a hospital, to prevent that? Because it just seems strange that in this day of age, that had to occur.
It, it all depends on which one you're talking about. Um.
There's a case where it was, uh, several, several days, yeah.
Um, the biggest issue with that, Paul, you're behind you. Okay, the biggest issue with that, and Paul can probably, um, um, help out with this, is the local group home or the group home that this individual was in closed, right, or shut down or something like that. They, they, they did close. It was a, it was an unusual circumstance for this, um, situation. It has to be guarded as to sharing information because it is protected. Um, it, this isn't, not an uncommon situation for us to be faced with individuals being, um, held in hospitals. Um, and when you look at the capacity throughout the state to be able to meet these individuals' needs, there is not any capacity. And, um, legally unfortunate for the hospital because of some of our patients that we serve together have vulnerabilities and the hospital is unable to discharge them to a lesser restrictive setting than their abilities or their, uh, assessed needs will allow. And when we don't have those types of facilities to discharge to, then the hospital's on the hook. And unfortunate as it may be, um, some of Social Services on the hook. Uh, with the state, we are, um, picking up full rate for those individuals, um, at thousands of dollars a day. We don't have a contract with the, uh, with the hospital for these types of patients. But what we did do is we, we did offer financial support to offset some of the cost. The challenge is, is for a small rural hospital, or the capacity to be available to meet these individuals' needs. They suck a lot of resources and staff resources. A lot of staff are not trained in being able to support those individuals. Um, our hospital was very willing to work with us and allow us to, again, state staff, to provide training to their staff for active treatment, those sorts of things. And so we're trying to minimize the impact to the hospital. Uh, but that doesn't always occur. Uh, I can tell you, we have others that are stuck throughout the state.
And I think, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Go ahead. I didn't mean to.
Yeah, and we actually, uh, as we were working with the state, we're aware of folks that have been stuck in this situation for well over a year because there's not the capacity to meet their needs. We were fortunate that we were able to find a provider that would work with us for this, uh, situation. Um, and I think it's working out very well for that person.
Yeah, and that comes also through, I would say, through a law enforcement to where, you know, they're doing, um, probably a mental health check, um, and individuals in that criteria to be housed in, um, the local jail. But, you know, they've been determined that they're at harm to themselves or others and, but also. Like Paul said, we're not geared, we're geared from a medical standpoint. We're not geared up for mental health. Um, so the, what we provide is, it's basically a safe environment, um, as safe as we can provide it.
Eats and sheets and, and somebody to keep an eye on things. Again, this is the type of situation that it's so important that we work with our community-based providers to swim upstream. You know, working with, uh, not only law enforcement, but all of our community providers to, uh, support individuals in the community. This particular, um, situation was a community provider didn't have the resources that they needed and just decided to be done. And that's unfortunate because was there something we could have done, but possibly if we were aware of that, you know, could we ramp up staffing? Well, that's the other challenge. Can't find staffing, right? People are not going into this line of work, um, for a number of reasons and, and the difficulty of working with these individuals is being one of them.
I think Kurt, uh, Kurt and I have discussed getting some people at the table and finding a way to solve this. You know, during the whole thing, and it was a while, I think Kurt never talked so much about the money or what the, it's not a very humane way to keep anybody, right?
Yeah, Minnesota to have this type of situation occur is, is, is appalling. And considering that we've watched these situations for more than twenty-some years since they really started to close the state hospitals and the CBHH system never really took hold, um, and there is no traction to resolve this issue. There's no new beds. There's, there, the strategies that we're hearing are, are, are just not going to meet the needs of the state.
I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
And individuals are, there's a lot of them come in that are violent.
Yep, I know.
So that's putting, you know, our staff at risk and, and, you know, and stuff like that. So, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. Um, but it's a broken state system. I mean, it's, it's extremely broken.
It's, it's not even a system. It was never developed. Once they, once they removed the state hospitals, they never developed the system.
And actually, that, we had this very, you're leading right into one of my committee updates later, uh, we had AMC joint meeting between HHS, uh, Committee and Public Safety on this very topic and how to handle prisoners and, and the system. And of course, their goal is to get more money from the state right now, but my point was, uh, what are we gonna do with the money? If, if there's, there's not a system.
That's right.
Uh, in place.
Not organized system, like Paul said, and the staffing out there to be able to take care of them, they're non-existent at this point. I mean, you're, if you put a plan together, you're probably three to five years away from actually having it run smoothly.
There, right, once you come up with an idea which nobody really has on the table, I mean, it does take a, a period of time to, to, to ramp that up. Uh, meanwhile, the, the, the number of individuals that are struggling and the, the symptoms that they present with are becoming more complex and more exasperating to support.
And maybe jump in here, Paul or, or Kurt, but like Dakota County built a thirty-million-dollar facility that's thirty beds. And I think Clay County has a facility, but I mean, there's, them are the only two that I'm aware of and.
Nobles County's.
There's a waiting list for.
Noble Co- Nobles County's been trying to develop one for like the last four and a half, five years and they've been hitting roadblocks all the way through. Um, they finally have some funding, but there's not really any meaningful partnership from DHS. The biggest issue is who holds the key to the safety net? Um, Statutorily, counties believe it is the Department of Human Services. However, the Department of Human Services has faced a number of, um, Supreme Court decisions, uh, both state and federal, that really pushed them out of wanting to be in that environment. Plus, some of the dynamics of the state hospital environment is, is distasteful for a lot of advocacy groups as well. Um, however, there is not really any coordination. And I think as a county, it really is, is incumbent upon us to work with, uh, all of our business partners, the hospital, our law enforcement partners, sometimes our jails partners, but all of our community-based partners such as Woodlands and, and, and other vendors that are providing this service. Because together we can lift the burden and maybe develop something that will minimize the risk to these individuals. Will we solve it? No, we need a bigger plan and that really occurs at the state and federal level. But at least we can hopefully minimize the risk for those that we're serving here in Meeker County. And I think that's, uh, kind of the best option for us going forward is to really kind of look at these types of situations and develop a plan locally as to how we'll attend to those.
So they answered my question. Nothing.
There is no answer. I gotta tell, I gotta thank you for that.
I was just making sure we didn't threw something off that caused this situation.
No, it's.
It's happening all over Minnesota.
You know, hats off to the staff, all the staff involved. Um, you know, the nurses up there did a great job. The Paul staff worked every day, um, trying to find a placement as fast as they could. So, I mean, it, it takes a lot of resources on everybody's end to, um, but like I said, it's just, it's, it's a sad situation because that's not the best place for the.
Somebody decided that we should close all the state institutions and then they threw the baby out with the bathwater and here we are. That's what happened. And now nobody is willing to address that.
They never, they never had a solution, Ben.
They never, well, they were gonna mainstream everybody and put them in these group homes and all that, but not, as you can see, not everybody fits that mold, obviously. There was nowhere for this person to go.
I had a brother in group home for twenty years.
Yeah, so.
It wasn't a pleasant experience. I mean, it's not great.
But I give, I give kudos to the staff and to the hospital. They certainly did the best they could.
And I think Paul's right. I think we gotta figure out, maybe there's a way that we come together as a county, you know, and, and Woodlands and everybody like that and figure out how we can best address this.
And just one other caveat in there through the committees that we were talking about too. It costs fourteen-hundred to twenty-four-hundred dollars a day. Uh, if, you know, to take care of that out-of-place person, if you will, and, um, the county's on the hook for that.
Yep.
All of it, yes.
Yeah.
Lovely dollars.
Well, that's where the, but then you're just throwing, you're still not fixing the problem. So if we get more dollars to offset that cost or expense at a county, it's.
Uh, having signed on the invoice for, for a situation that was very expensive, I was very pleased that it was at least signing it to a county partner. I mean, you would keep it in the family at least.
Good, good point.
We gave the, we gave the friends and family discount.
By the way, you went over your ten minutes.
Hey, I got more though. I'm not, I'm just.
Oh, but you're gonna be way over then.
I, I was curious though, do most hospitals have their own security in terms of, uh, personnel? Or how does that work?
Not at Critical Access, no. They rely on their local sheriff and, and city police officers.
Okay, because that was a question of mine too, because I was like wondering, well, maybe that was a hospital issue because we had the county level and I'm sure this, this city level or state.
Local Sheriff's, Critical Access, do not. Um, they're just, it's, it's not feasible and affordable. Uh, they work very closely with the local police and, uh, the sheriff's department, so.
We're good with Hospital Matters?
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item up, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Here will be some things for Julie to converse about.
Yep.
Hi, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. This morning, and why am I down here? The approval they asked the Barger Committee bylaws. This is a, this, uh, proposed update is the first to be updated by a committee's bylaws since two thousand fifteen. This update is participated by a question about whether commissioners are voting members of the committee. Subcommittee recommended clarifying the total membership. The committee is seven, including one commissioner. And this also addresses the quorum issue as the size of the committee has increased, but the threshold of quorum remains the same. Okay, so this to the bylaws.
Mr. Chair, move to continue the passage of, or approval of any AIS Advisory Committee bylaws until, um, there's further clarification done. Um, I spoke with Greg about it this morning. He knew, um, there's a portion missing that the committee voted on. That Greg had stepped out of the room, so he wasn't aware of it. When he came back in, it was all done, so. And it also needs to go to our county attorney for one last look, once we make those, so that the language is absolutely correct.
All right, so I got a motion to continue from Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion or questions? None, all in favor of the motion to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And we also have the other AIS item, the grants.
Yeah, item M. The AIS grant?
Hang on.
Should we address that with Greg? We had an item, um, within the Consent Agenda that gave out the, um, grant awards. And Lake Washington and Lake Dassel, I'm, I'm questioning those two amounts and because Ariana's been on vacation, I wasn't able to get clarification of those. So I requested that that also be, um, postponed until, maybe next month, until we get that exact dollar.
I believe what had happened, she split that hundred-and-fifty dollars we're talking about between Washington and Stella. What was gonna happen with that?
Okay. Um, there's no hurry with, with the delivering of those funds. And then we could have the actual amounts printed on the, on the motion, if that's all right. So I would like to move that that be corrected until, yeah.
Be continued? You wanna, to continue, you wanna, wanna hear your motions?
I would like to pull from the agenda, the item having to do with grant approvals, um, until the actual dollar amounts can be verified. Whether that's a month from now or, but I would just like, yeah, that's awesome.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bredesen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion or?
I feel like this is the second time I voted on this.
No, it's a little different.
No, it's not. We pulled, it's not on the agenda and it wasn't on his agenda.
It was pulled off the Consent Agenda. It's still on the.
Okay, then.
It got moved in with.
Calling me wrong.
We have to do it twice.
Okay.
All right, we good?
A little feisty today, isn't he?
All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Kell Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator.
Hi, Mikel. Congratulations on five years.
Thank you.
Did you get a diamond, did you get a gold watch or anything for five? No.
I haven't looked at the catalog.
Ah, I don't think you'll have a choice of.
You get a picture of a gold watch.
That's right. Get to look at the picture and dream.
But thanks.
Oh, goodness.
Actually, she gets a free ticket to this year's smelt feed over in, uh.
Darwin.
I'm okay with that.
All right, what do you got for us?
So the first thing I have is to approve submitting the pay equity report. So every three years, we are required to submit the pay equity report, uh, under statute. And so ours is due this year, so it would be for the previous year's information. So the information that is included is the job title, the number of males and females and non-binary employees in each position, uh, the points per position, and that came from our classification study that we did back in two thousand eighteen. Uh, the monthly minimum, or the monthly minimum and maximum pay ranges. Uh, however, just know that on that maximum, that includes the monthly county contribution for health insurance. So if it looks really high, that's because it includes that information as well. And then the length of time to reach the maximum pay. So it includes all of that information. Uh, the next steps would be to submit this to the state, um, and they do a formula to see if we are equitably paying and offering insurance to all of our different genders and all, in our, all of our different positions. And a notice gets posted at the public library and then as long as we're in compliance, that's really all there is to this process.
It gets posted at the public library?
Yeah, I, I don't know why, but that's.
I don't either. Interesting.
What they have you do.
Okay.
Everybody hangs out there.
I guess. That's, that's the internet, really, but.
I was, I was wondering what department at the state. E V Ls or S Ds?
It is the Minnesota Ma- Budget Management.
Okay.
MMB is what it, I can't think of what it fully stands for.
Yeah, but, okay.
Julie, you're on the library committee, aren't you? Can you verify that this gets posted?
I'll check the next time I'm there, returning my books.
She'll post it.
You still get books?
Sure, why not?
I don't know.
Going to the library the first time I had to do this, where's your bulletin board? Yeah.
Very good.
So make a motion to approve the, uh, pay equity report.
I had a motion by Commissioner Olberg to approve the Meek County Pay Equity Report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breterson. Any further discussion?
Approve submitting it. We don't know if it's right.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, McCal.
Okay, so the next thing is to ratify the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four Min P clerical contract. Uh, so this will be the first of two contracts to bring forward to today for ratification. Um, so for the clerical contract, this includes a three percent cost of living for two thousand twenty-three and three percent for two thousand twenty-four. It includes implementing the market adjustments in two thousand twenty-three that were identified previously. It includes updated health insurance language, uh, updated language for vacation accruals, and we added good standing language for the sick leave severance. And it adds trigger language to include Juneteenth as a recognized holiday under the contract in the event that it becomes a state holiday. So this is part of our whole negotiations process that we've been working diligently on. So it's nice to see some of these coming before you for ratification.
Mr. Chair, I have a, just a quick question.
Absolutely.
So language changes, updated vacation accruals, and added good standing language. Can you just explain that to me a bit?
So when we updated the vacation accruals for the non-union employees, um, previously, I can't remember what month that was that we did that, but we had increased the, the levels.
Yep.
Uh, we did not change those in the union contracts. We waited to update those until negotiations. The good standing language, we already had that in the vacation severance, but we wanted to then also add it to the sick leave severance as well.
All right. So it goes back to when we added those that time?
Well, we changed, we updated everybody else, so we just waited to do the ones through the contract and then some language change.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, move to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Min P clerical contract.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breterson. Any additional questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
The next one is to ratify the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four Min P non-licensed contract. So what this includes, it's, it's similar to the clerical. So this includes a three percent cost of living adjustment for twenty-three, three percent cost of living adjustment for twenty-four, implementing the market adjustments for, in two thousand twenty-three of, uh, the positions we had, uh, previously discussed. Updating health insurance language, also the language changes, uh, similar to clerical, so the vacation accrual. This one, we updated the court cancellation hours, so this one, we updated how much time they needed before, um, court canceled. So we were able to go down to twenty-four hours from forty. Uh, added good standing language for sick leave sev- severance and added good standing language for banked holidays. So if someone did not work a holiday and they just were receiving banked, uh, time for that day, if they did not leave in good standing, then they are no longer able to get that time. Uh, added tr- trigger language to include Juneteenth as a recognized holiday under the contract, if that becomes a state holiday. And then increase the shift differential from eighty cents per hour to eighty-five cents per hour.
All right. Any questions? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Min P non-licensed contract.
A motion by Commissioner Shifelbine.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Breterson. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And carried. Thanks, McCal. Appreciate it. Barb Block, County Auditor.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you have an item that's somewhat unique, so I'm gonna give a little bit of time to explain it, and it's also on the screen. So the Meek County Auditor's office has, um, a tax book, it's a property where you see the two blue squares to the lower and right is the property that I'm talking about, which is right on Jewett's Crick, identified as twenty-seven one seven seven. Discussion with the city, uh, two council members, or council member and now mayor. We felt that rather than, uh, than approving that for sale, that maybe it was in the best interest for, uh, less than market price to the city of Litchfield, and that is what I'm gonna be discussing. So the resolution of the city is requesting that the, uh, board consider sale of that to the city for, uh, fifty dollars. The, uh, successor has, uh, approximately two thousand on those four lots. Uh, the property is virtually, uh, non-buildable and very much non-useable. This is the second round in recent time that it's been on the tax forfeit list. We had it sold after being on the inventory for a considerable amount of time, with the idea that the gentleman was gonna plant, um, trees on there, or apple trees, and that never happened. Matter of fact, uh, no taxes were paid on it. So because the city has the adjacent property, this property could likely enhance their property by them having that entire chunk, if there is opportunity for them to do some construction or future building project in, uh, development. So the city will be getting a clear title on this by purchasing it. That's the request of, uh, section of the board. In addition to the purchase, they will be paying the, um, recording fees, state assurance, state deed backs, just like any other property that we sell through the tax forfeit method. In discussion with the staff at the city and myself, I think this is a very good option for them to utilize that property in a better way. And it really doesn't do any good to be on our inventory and be sold and then around three. So the request I am making is that you approve the tax sale to the city of Litchfield, parcel identified, plus the, um, the fifty-dollar collection, plus the fees.
Barb is there, uh, so all backed out. Everything else is paid, don't they? I, I mean, we're not incurring any other than a hundred.
We did have to ta- uh, cancel taxes and, and penalty and interest, which was a little over two hundred dollars, but that's often happening on tax forfeit property. But we're not gonna incur additional costs to put this through the sale process and everything.
I feel like we've been here before with that piece of properties.
Yep. This one is not a good one. It's been hanging off for a while.
No, it has.
If you drive, I drove there this morning just to make sure that I could remember how to do it. You drive past Fisher Eye, keep on going as far west as you can go. When you can't go, you run into a, a dead end snow pile, and that's where that particular property is. So it's, it's just not useful. But I think it would be very useful for the city of Litchfield, and in talking to the two councils and the, uh, mayor, I think it's a good enhancement for them to have that whole square.
They own the other, they own it.
The two blue square blocks.
Yeah, okay.
So have we had to do any upkeep on that property?
We've done nothing to it.
No lawn, or mow?
No, there was no, no, there was no lawn to mow, and there's a few trees that are crisscrossed and fallen in there, but they didn't impact the cricks, so no, we did nothing to it while we had it.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the sale of tax forfeit property identified as parcel number twenty-seven dash eleven seventy-seven zero zero zero, lots eight, nine, ten, and eleven in block one hundred eighteen, second edition to city of Litchfield, Meek County, Minnesota, to city of Litchfield for fifty dollars plus fees outlined.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Breterson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
While I'm on discussing forfeit property and delaying taxes, we ran the year-end reports, and we had a decrease by about, uh, twelve thousand from last year year-end to this year year-end, which is very positive, cause that's two years in a row where we had a decrease.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Becky.
Good morning.
Sheriff's Office.
You don't look like Brian Cruz.
I don't. I'm just Deputy Becky Howell.
Is he gone or what? Is he on vacation or?
In another meeting.
Ah. We haven't seen him for a while. I miss him.
Okay.
You're fine.
Relate the message.
Yeah, you do that.
You have me today, so.
That's fine.
That's good.
All right, what do you got?
So we are on for, um, purchase of, uh, squads. We, we budgeted for eight squads to, um, cover as for our two new deputy positions and six replacement squads for squads that are high miles and running into, um, mechanical issues. Um, but due to the manu- manufacturing restrictions at this time, we are only able to acquire four squads. Um, and they've closed the bidding for those. It was open a very brief period of time, and it's very limited what, um, agencies can pick up for squads at this time. So we're requesting that, um, the purchase of the four squads, um, that were in the annual budget, um, be approved so that we can purchase at least four squads.
Uh, Becky, and you just received four, two that were just pre- just recently, that.
Correct.
I know we're backlog.
We are backlogged and, and COVID played a role in that, just because there was one year where we didn't get squads, and so, um, we're running them on maximum miles.
So them ones are in service now, or?
They are in service.
Cause I know.
The four that we just purchased, they are going in, um, today to, yes, to, um, the outfitter to get all the equipment installed into them.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was this, you just got them, probably a month ago or so. Okay. All right.
So these squads are available now, these four?
They will be, well, once they're manufactured, then we'll be able to purchase them, so it'd probably be late summer, early fall. Hopefully.
So you got the green light to get four from ten forty, but we gotta prove it, so they can continue the process. Under twenty-five hundred dollars a peat, each higher than what was originally estimated.
Correct. I mean, then they don't have all the requirements that we like on them, so there'll be additional, um, installation costs for, and for harnessing wires and such, but this is what the state bid is this year, so.
And they're the only ones that were bidding on the state?
Pardon me?
So nobody local was on the state bidding?
No.
They weren't, they aren't even?
No, like I say, it was such a brief period of time that that wasn't even open.
How does that work? They just say it's open for this right now and that's it, or I don't?
Yeah, I don't, you like I say, with manufacturing restrictions, it's, it's very limited of what agencies can purchase.
Okay.
Have a question, cause I was looking, and this is only a question.
Sure.
And I looked over the quote, it's, uh, they're Oxford white, but then you get a dark car feature. Do you know what that is?
I do not know what a dark car feature, I would, I would guess the interior would be dark.
It says it, it says the interior.
I just found that kind of interesting. And then the second question I have was, and this is only from my own information.
Sure.
What is police engine idle feature?
Well, because squads, you know, you're in those squads and so it saves on your engine, um, because you do spend time idling.
That's a.
These are mobile offices for deputies.
I'll help you out, Becky. I'll, I'll, public safety vehicles never shut off.
Right.
I mean, if we're on, say, the truck will run for your ten hours, it's running ten hours. We'll haul, we'll call fuel trucks and bring fuel to us, cause when you're on scene, you don't shut it off.
Yep.
So that's, so when you're idling, I'm assuming that's a conserve fuel and it's a special feature for that.
I was just curious. I didn't, I hadn't seen that before, so I was wondering, you know.
We frequently get that question from citizens too, like, why is that squad car running? Because if you need that deputy in emergency, you want that squad to be able to go right away. You don't want it to have to warm up or de-ice or.
And if you burn up a fire truck because it was shut off and it won't start again, you got some explaining to people.
I had it in my head that because of the computers and so forth, I was wondering if it increased the idle speed and decreased it to match the load draw coming from the required more.
Well, and, and we do have, that's a whole other thing too, cause it does take a period of time to get your electronics fired up when you get into that squad, and so that's why we run them, you know, for the entire shift, so that, that's all ready to go.
So these are in the budget already.
I burned it.
They were.
For two thousand twenty-three.
Yes.
And it's includes eight, and we're getting, we're ordering four now.
Great.
So, Mr. Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the purchase of four squads from ten forty-four at a cost of forty-two thousand five oh eight eighty-eight per unit.
Commissioner Olberg with the motion, Commissioner Johnson with the second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right.
Our next request is, um, for approval of the jail medical contract with advanced correctional healthcare. In early December, we were notified that Mend Correctional is going out of, um, business, and so they advise that we need to find a new, um, healthcare provider for our jail. And, um, after checking with eight providers, um, advanced correctional healthcare is the only provider that provided a quote, um, to provide this service for our jail.
Can I ask how much, how many times do you have to call them to, to be there, or?
Well, with, with, uh, with jail, um, protocol, and then with, you know, requirements statutorily and with Department of Corrections, you have to have access to twenty-four seven medical care for these individuals. And so, um, with advanced correctional, well, with Mend, we also shared the same jail nurses we did with Candy Ohio County. I mean, she provided those services, but we always had where we could call and get that service. And if it was something that was pressing or that needed media care, then we were advised to take them to the hospital for that care.
Okay.
And then do they just make a visit every so often?
They do.
They have a day they come in, or two days, or so many hours?
They are scheduled days, um, to serve here in Meek County.
I know Kurt was just here and talked about some issues with the hospital. If we could coordinate things with our local medical team, this, this is not something that we could coordinate with our local folks, or?
Well, they, the local folks do provide that service, um, when, um, the healthcare provider can't, you know, when men couldn't, then they would step in, but, um, we did contact Meek Memorial, and they're unable to, they'll work with us in a pinch, but they are unable to do anything long-term.
Oh, well, I underst- that isn't quite, I think we under, we offered to keep the nurse on and pay until you got it solved, but then we were told they had to be trained a certain way for, correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't, no.
He offered, he offered to keep her on and pay her because of short, because she's not getting paid right now from Mend. But, um, we are keeping her because she works with Candy Ohio and us.
Right.
And he can't do a long-term contract because he can't, um, give us a provider.
Right, we don't have it. But we did offer, I wanted to know that, we did offer to help out in this pinch, and we're kinda told, uh, we got it, I think so. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Is this something that we will continue to coordinate with Candy Ohio County or will we be on our own?
No, that is our hope, and our hope is that our current jail nurse, um, we're hoping that she'll work for advanced correctional care, healthcare, and so that she can continue, we can continue that partnership with Candy Ohio County in sharing, um, her skills for our jail.
So do they have to be trained in a certain way for jail care, or just? I mean, is, I suppose it's different than, I don't know.
It's different.
It's probably a light.
A lot of stuff that she can do, instead of sending them out, she can do in, if the lab works, all of that stuff, um.
Which makes sense, because if you have them in there, you're not sending them out to the ER or bringing them to the hospital and causing, you know, more expense and more time, is it necessary either, so?
Or it might take three different people to perform a function that she can do in one visit, so. All right. Any other questions?
Um, I do have one item regarding the agreement. I did have a chance to review it. Speaking with the sheriff, he was diligent in requesting that they add a hold harmless and indemnification language. And when we were looking at the insurance language, that's not up to the specifics that we typically would be recommending. that we typically would be recommending. However, because of the situation that they're in, where this is the only vendor available, I think it'd be in the best interest to move forward with this agreement, even though it doesn't meet the recommended minimum limits.
That's that recommended limit that we do on every contract?
Correct.
Of how much, I forget?
It depends on if it's, professional liability is usually four thousand and two thousand for individual occurrence in aggregate, one point five.
You said thousand, million?
Million, sorry.
No, I know, it was million, but we've done, I think we've done that before, haven't we?
We have, yeah.
But it's up to the board to make that final decision, because if we were to end up having to be underinsured, then it would be coming back on the taxpayers.
Okay.
Well, what, and we can't change that?
We requested it through ACH, and they declined to move forward with those recommended limits. They haven't done it for other counties.
They have not?
Correct. However, other counties neighboring us may not have the hold harmless and indemnification language, so I think our contract is beefier than maybe others. So the sheriff did do his due diligence, and.
How short are we on levels? Where are we, what is our insurance coverage level?
It's three million for the professional liability, so one million. And then the individual occurrence is only one million, and it should be two.
And that was the only bid that came in?
That was the only bid that came in.
Double the cost.
Is that getting more difficult than it used to be to get people into rural county jails, probably?
You know, I I think it is, I mean, there's a lot of providers out there, but there's a lot of.
There's just so much shorts, everybody's.
Everybody's short-staffed, and so it's.
And and do these rules with having this many hours of a nurse and all that in place, is that DOC, or do we, is that a, we have to have, that's DOC?
And then plus, statutorily, you have to have.
No ma- no matter how many prisoners you have.
Correct.
Well, and I think another thing that comes into play here is the state prisons. I think state, what state of Minnesota in front of it seems to be pulling priority against.
I'm sure.
Someone competing against us. So that's probably where some of the larger fish are playing in that state. So we're gonna end up with some of the, not as much activity.
It's a large jump, boy. It's really, you almost feel like extortion.
Alright.
Current jail nurse has really provided compassionate care to our inmates, and so our hope is that she will continue in that position.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve jail medical services contract with ACH effective February first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Commissioner Bredesen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelbine. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll need a motion to go into closed session. I look for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Shifelbine, motion.
Pursuant to thirteen DEO five subdivision three C three for consideration of sale of the property.
You meant to say that, didn't you, Danny?
Exactly. Thank you.
And Paul.
What Danny was thinking.
And Commissioner Johnson seconded that.
You really don't want to confirm what I was thinking at that moment.
And it's just as a reminder, when we go into closed session, the only item of discussion will be regarding the sale of real property, and then we will be coming up into public forum.
Ten four. Alright, everybody got that? We are going into closed session, I need to vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, we are closed.
Just need a minute to swap out the sticks and start recording.